Good morning, everyone. We were just waiting a couple of minutes because some people were over in the ballroom and by mistake, they're thinking they were always there and they didn't know it was over here. So we're just waiting for them to get over here. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out this morning. My name is Tony Iorio. I'm the Vice President of Development. If I haven't met you before, it's a pleasure to meet you this morning. I've been involved with this development since conception, which is a long time. I've been with the company since 95, so very proud of what we've accomplished and as we continue to grow, hope to be part of that tremendous growth and very excited to participate. We do have in attendance today our co-president, Matt Orros, very in the back with the jacket, looking very debonair. And he's, you might have seen him in Solavita Strong. He does a great job on the TV, so he's very, great personality. We also have with us Rhonda Mossing. She's with one of the underwriters that has worked with all of our CDDs in the past, MBS Capital, and she's here today also, just in attendance. But again, I thank everybody to come here. First, I just want to start off, we plan on doing another one this afternoon. We want to make sure that we continue to get all the information out we can as early as we can before any CDD meetings are held and discuss any questions you have. I'll be here all day long. So after the meeting, you have questions, you don't understand it, I really didn't get it, there's no stupid question if you want to stand up again and we'll go through it. I'd be glad to explain it to you. And again, that's the goal, is to make sure that there's total clarity on what we're trying to do. I think you'll see from today, the presentation, I'm extremely excited about what we're presenting here today and I want to give a kind of little history for everyone. If you've got a couple of minutes and understand why are we here, how did we get here, what's going on? You see these boards behind you, but the genesis of this really started probably a year and a half to two years ago. I met with a number of different committees. In particular, we met with the Performing Arts Group and we start talking about modifications to the ballroom and then we said, "We really need a performing arts theater. How do we build it? What do we do?" You know, we start talking at that time on dialogue. I'm involved with the HOAs, I'm involved with the clubs. I've been hearing, you know, from management, meaning the restaurant managers, about some things that are needed in the restaurants, some facelifts that are needed. We start looking at mosaics, trying to open up mosaics and challenges that we had. So that was really the genesis of how do we get there and what do we need to do to get to that point? So we start looking at our various options. At the same time, we start saying, you know, home-wise, there's about 4,200 homes in our community right now. How many are projected to be built in here? Does anybody know? Okay, well, we're approved in our planned development for about 6,000. So we're going to probably be at 5,500, 5,800, somewhere around there as the final number. So that's the total number. So we're at about 4,200 right now. We start saying, "Maybe this is an opportunity for a transition plan." So we start looking at how these, you see these boards behind you, how we could fund some of these improvements and make this happen and at the same time, work on a transition. And we start looking at our various options. And I think, I'm going to go through a series of slides today that was presented to some of the committees that have been set up. And again, I want to thank the committees for meeting with us early on. There's been a very active group. You've met the Solavita Amenity Evaluation Committee. We've had an opportunity to meet with them and sit down and try and explain what our goals were and answer some of their questions. We've also met with the Solavita Advisory Committee and tried to answer their questions as well and let them know what we're trying to do. And first, I want to apologize for what happened back in November. Okay, let me just state, and I said this to the committees, we clearly, clearly did not try to do anything underhanded. We started the dialogue with the CDD about an approach about how we could accomplish these goals and somehow the misinformation just got out in the blog and it went crazy. So again, I apologize for that. It's probably my fault for not making sure we had everything out in front of us. So it was one of those things where the cart was in front of the horse. So today, we're going to go through some slides. And first of all, I want to say there was, there is a handout that's available today that kind of showed some of these boards behind you, an explanation of some of the things that we're proposing. I'm going to go into detail on every one of those capital improvements that we're talking about. In addition, there's some of the information about what we call Solavita Strong and that's kind of a name we came up with, is taking us to the, kind of the next vision. And there's a website that's set up that answers many of the questions that we've received online. It will continue to operate for any questions that you have that we can get back and respond to those. Our goal again, is to continue to stay transparent, to work with the committees. And again, nothing has been approved yet through any of the community development districts. We haven't, we haven't met with them yet. We plan a workshop coming up on the 16th. It is a workshop and that workshop is to work. And we're going to be in there asking very detailed questions, they will, back and forth, and there's still a lot of negotiations that have to go on. We're going to be here today. I'm going to go through a presentation and I'm going to ask that, we hold any questions until we get to the end of the program and then the mics will be yours. And then we'll be here to try and answer those. If I cannot answer them, we will get an answer for you. And some of the things are going to come about with the negotiations and working with the CDD to make this happen. So I think with that opportunity now, we'll go through kind of a slide presentation that we originally did. You might, some of you might have already seen some of this on the Solavita Strong website. Again, these handouts are available up front. I had a, I did have a copy of my handout of everything that was going to be presented today and someone took it, so they're already reading ahead of time of what I'm going to present. But with that, we're going to, this is again, our program we call Solavita Strong about doing two things. One is to accomplish the transition from the amenities which are currently owned by AV Homes to the residents and at the same time, looking at enhancements and improvements to some of the amenity facilities. And there's a saying that we've had in this company since I've been here and that thing was, we are, oh, there it is. I found it, okay, there's it. We do not sell green bananas. And that, you know, I think everybody understands that. We want to enjoy the facilities now while we're active and enjoy the facilities every single day of our lives and not look at a plan somewhere in the future and say, "Well, this is going to be built 10 years from now." I don't care 10 years from now, I want it now. So I'll go through the details of when could these things be built? 10 years from now? No, no, you're not going to hear those things. You're going to hear what we could accomplish. And I know that because I was here when we built all of this and every facet of this project. So with that, enough said, we're going to work on the slides and... What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, there it is. You know, first there's a, okay, I got to press in this direction. There's a caveat here about, again, just explaining that nothing yet has been formalized or approved yet from a CDD standpoint or AV Homes Board standpoint. You know, what we're talking about here is an explanation of what our proposal is and we'll go into, this is just something that our legal department makes sure we always include in every one of the documents that we have. With that, we're going to, again, discuss about the overview of the Solavita Strong program, talk about the club facilities that are for sale, our capital improvements. We're going to go through what this is going to cost from a resident standpoint, which you're going to be very happy to hear. And then we'll talk about the access management issue that was raised at that first meeting. And then if there's any questions also, I mentioned that MBS Capital's here, there's underwriters to talk about that. So first question that everyone raises, why are we selling? You know, why are we selling the amenities? First of all, we felt that from a timing perspective, the transition made sense to, as we were exiting the community and where is that, where would AV Homes go after this? One of the things that we've talked about and you understand, we have a strong presence in this community and we have property across the street where we're planning for another development across the street in the future and that's called Solavita Grand. So we'll get into, any questions on that, I'll be able to go over the details of that as well. But right now, we felt that it was timely for a transition to make this progression, to take the ownership of the facilities from our hands and put them in the residents' hands. Again, the goals and this is hopefully very, very clear, but the first thing is that from a transition standpoint, we are builders. We're home builders. We built every home in this community and developers and not in the business of operating amenity facilities. So it made sense from a transition standpoint of these club facilities to a resident-controlled community development district. This also provides a means for us to provide capital for improvements that we would like to see done now in the restaurant facilities and also additional clubhouse facilities and a performing arts theater and you'll see that in the explanation today. And the other key is to take the membership fee that exists today and to cap that membership fee. Okay, so there would be no additional dollars that would be expanded. I've heard all kinds of things. We've got Q and As that have come out on the website where people say, "I'm not paying another thousand dollars." We'll explain that thoroughly and everybody understands that what you're paying in a membership fee is going to translate to a different fee. So we'll go through that in detail. And then the last thing is understand, what is, what are the differences? What's a disruption to access? And we heard these terminologies about soft gates. What does this mean? Let's, we're going to dig into that so everybody fully understands what controls are going to be in place when we implement the program. Why is this good for the community? Very simply, we're looking at $12 million in capital improvements, no incremental charges to the residents for the construction of those facilities. And again, we've had dialogue when we talked about the performing arts theater and some of the members of that committee say, "Well, you know, we're willing to pay more for this." Listen, we're getting this and it's not going to cost you any more from a membership fee standpoint. And then, and again, no, no membership due increases, they would be eliminated. So you see on your membership fees, there's a dollar per month increases on an annual basis, that gets eliminated. That will be locked in for whatever you're paying right now. Next, we'll talk, we're going to talk about, this is just an explanation of what are the club facilities and we have a map that's over there and I'm going to sit down with anybody later on. It's very hard to see on this plan, but it just shows where all the facilities are. The primary ones are this Village area, the Palms, we've got Belleviana, Venezia, Floravista, and then we have all the different neighborhood facilities as well. So that's really the club facilities. The relevant ones that we're talking about today, again, are all down in the Village and we'll go through the map on those as well. This is just another explanation of where they're at and I'll, we'll be able to explain all of those. This is the Freedom Park area where we're sitting currently with the 16 pickleball courts. This is the Palms, right now the Palms amenity that's set up. And here's some more explanations on additional neighborhood pools that we have and the Riviera Club. And now we'll talk about, I mean, this is what gets me excited, the capital improvements. And we, you know, we recognize the shortcomings in some of the restaurant facilities and some of the issues we had in the past. Everybody's been saying, "Open up mosaics, open up mosaics." Well, I'll go through an explanation of what the problem was at Mosaics. Mosaics was really, you've got a catering operation that cannot function at the same time Mosaics operates. You go inside those kitchens and anyone that's been a restaurant operator can understand, they just don't have the laydown area to make that all happen and to make the two function separately. So the plan we're proposing, and I'll go into detail on that, really makes Mosaics possible as a really standalone restaurant. We've read, you know, how do we assemble some of these improvements that you see in the list? Well, we work very closely with our management company, Evergreen Lifestyle Management. Craig Carmichael's in attendance over here. I think everybody knows that individual very well, but we're very fortunate to have him and we're going to go into explanation on how things are operated, how things are managed during the process today. They have a process that's called, it's called Evergreen Connect. And what that is, is a very proactive program that's set up to manage the facilities. So it's not a reactive, but it's a proactive system that's set up to manage. And that's how they've been managing these facilities. That's how things have been replaced when they had to, painted when they had to, and taken care of as they have been. He has daily, weekly, monthly, and yearly requirements that are set up with his people that tie back into software system and iPhones and iPads. So he'll be able to elaborate on those things as well, either before the meeting or after the meeting, so he could talk about those and explain. But I think it's very important, we start talking about improvements and how is things going to be managed and operations costs and how are we going to manage this ourselves and so forth. Some of the improvements, you'll see the capital improvement, here's an overall chart of where they exist and all of them are in the Village Center or over in a new area. You'll see there's a number six on that plan over there, but it's on Village Drive. And on the map, it shows kind of the layout of that, but that's a new health and wellness center. And we'll go through what is included in that, so very, very excited about that. Now, this is a layout of the capital improvements, of the general layout of each one of the locations. You'll see we've got Stonegate Grill on one end, we've got a new performing arts theater, we've got improvements over where Mosaics is number four, and then you'll see the bistro, some improvements over at the bistro and at the library. Now, this is a blow up first and again, I'll refer, everybody, please take a look at your monitors, but this would take the bistro area and as you know, the library's on the first floor, we would move the library over to where the computer room is at. And that is where you see E. Those two would be combined and you see most libraries now have computers in them versus a separate computer room. When we opened up, no one had an iPad. No one had an iPhone. What is that? We had these computers that are sitting there on a desk, so things had moved on. I mean, everyone's got an iPad, everybody's got an iPhone, they got, they got their tablets now, so you know, the world has changed so much. So now you, but you still do have people that have a need for the computer, so we would combine that with the library and move that function over to that E area. What you see in D, and everybody talks about the tower, what's going on with the tower? Well, we've got this great plan that we would patio that whole area around it and have it set up where it would become a bar, a four-sided bar. Not that anybody drinks, but it's nice. You could have a lemonade out there and it would overlook the water and the entire pond and you could look at the Dragon Boat Club going back and forth. I mean, it'll be exciting. Another margarita, please. So that's what you see right there in D. I mean, that's really, really exciting with the chairs and so forth, overlooking the water. And then you would take the bistro and turn it into a real bistro. Fix the kitchen up, expand it and really improve it so it's, it'd be another great amenity and great facility for the community as well. So, and again, this is a blow up of the, you'll see the paver area down in the end. I think they're showing a spa over there, but I don't think that would be the case, but probably some kind of water fountains, that's what it's supposed to be at the very end. You see it around the bar and four-sided bar, so you look right across at somebody else drinking, which is great, so. Now, one of the, one of the big things we've heard about is some of the inefficiencies that happened at the grill. And what our plan is, at the grill would be to take the bar, why keep, I keep talking about bar, I don't know. We would take the area where you would come in, that initial seating area, and expand the bar. So it would be a huge wraparound bar. You can see in the purple there. So instead of this smaller bar, there seems to be a lack of seats at the bar for some reason, I couldn't understand it. But we would expand an area and have tabletops when you come in. So you have your choice of eating on these tabletops like you see in many restaurants. Expanding the kitchen, so we would do improvements in the kitchen facilities, okay? And then, then we would take some more outdoor seating that we would set up in the dining area. So lots of opportunities and then, this is for the ladies and some of the men too, so we would go and take the pro shop where it exists right now and turn that into a beauty salon, okay? Okay, so the plan, it would, you know, it's really separate. Well, where's, where's the golf operation? What are you guys doing? We would move that over to the cart barn area. We've already met with the people that manage that and again, I'm going to explain, the golf course is not included in the acquisition sale. We would retain the golf course and manage that. There have been many people that have done a Q and A, say, "We do not want a golf course. We don't want to get involved with the golf course. We don't want to touch it." And one of the things is understanding that because it is, you know, it's quite difficult unless you get the right manager in there to manage that facility. So we would take the pro shop, it would move over to where the cart barn area is at and move it in the front of the cart barn area and that would become a beauty salon. And I'll show you the details on a little staging area and so forth. Very excited. Now here's the coup de grâce, but we're on, we're on the, this is Mosaics. And one of the problems I may explain before that we had at Mosaics was that you can't operate catering and a separate restaurant. This gives the option to provide both at the same time. So in the purple, you see where we've taken what was under, screened in area and we've enclosed that. So we would put a permanent roof over the top of that in lieu of the screen, in lieu of the awning that's there and enclose that. And then you'll see down on the very, on the south part of it, there's kind of a separate room out there you would have, you could have separate functions in there for maybe a party of 10, 20, 30 and the operation of the facilities could still take place. But we would also have another bar to the north, but that would be on the street side, but that would be enclosed, screened in, but outdoors. So we thought that would be nice to have a nice outdoor bar. People just want to sit there and have another lemonade and, and then, you know, improvements on, and one of the things is also is a facelift. I mean, you want to come into a restaurant, how many restaurants have you been in where you want to look and have new colors, new chairs, vibrancy? So that would be really the plan in these, to give a facelift. And then in, you'll see in the orangish color, that's where we would expand the restaurant, the kitchen facilities for the restaurants and have those separations, so you would be able to have two separate functions at the same time. Catering going on, which is huge right now because there's a function daily that occurs over there. And then Mosaics could be operated separately. And this is, this is a picture of the performing arts theater, again, a conceptual design. Where would that be? I have no idea. Well, the location would be the front lawn area as you come into the community, right in front of the ballroom. And people have said this before, they said, "You guys were supposed to build that long ago." Well, I was here on day one and what was, what was said is we were going to, this is where a performing arts theater could be located. It wasn't that we're going to build it tomorrow and, you know, with the downturn in the market and everything that happened, nothing ever happened with the performing arts theater, but here's an opportunity where a performing arts theater could get built. And there's a picture of it, but how many seats in that? Would be a 500-seat performing arts theater that can be set up with what's called a green room. Anybody's familiar in the theater business with a green room, but it's where you go back and you kind of hang out for a while till you get out there and perform. You'd have restrooms back there, all the things that you would see in a theater, other things that would be needed. We would work very, very closely with the committee that's now set up for the entertainment, the staging and entertainment committee and make sure that all the things and wish lists that they have on there to provide different types of shows and functions are accommodated. Sound systems, acoustics, the stage, 35 inches, got to be 35 inches. Why is that? Well, so everybody could look at everybody's feet dancing. The original one we had in the ballroom was only like 22. We had to go back in and we actually raised it recently, I think you saw that happen, and we got curtains for our green rooms. Not the best thing. So this would really get us to the next level and have an opportunity for real performances. And I understand in the theater business, 500, and this is from the committee, but 500's a magical number you need to have so you could have at least that seating so you could bring in top-notch entertainers. Tony Orlando, I understand he's coming to town soon, those kind of things, so. This is, this is a picture of the Health and Wellness Center and this is, again, one of those extensions of, the location of this would be, the plan on this would be on Village Drive and we'll show you on the map where that's included, but it's on Village Drive. It's about halfway between the Village and Portofino. So on the north part, there's about five acres that would be set aside over there to build this facility. And what would be included in there is a plethora of lifestyle, health and wellness things. The most important, we've got another pool with a cabana with a bar at it. More pickleball. Who wants more pickleball? The Smashers, yes, I know they do. More tennis courts, basketball courts, you know, we got March Madness. I know there are some former basketball players here, so you'll have an opportunity with a full court to play again. Handball courts, anybody plays racquetball? We're looking for racquetball finally to get, to get in place. And then inside the facility would be more cardio, more workout facilities and all about keeping you healthy. I mean, that's really what the goal would be, Health and Wellness Center and focused in on that. And here's the resident cost. This is what, this is the shocker, but the plan would be to not increase, we would, we would do these $12 million worth of improvements and it's not going to cost the residents, they're taking the payment of what they pay right now for the membership and you translate it to a different vehicle, which would be through the CDD. And here's a picture of it, this is the current membership dues, that's how it's laid out right now, comes to AV Homes. That gets eliminated and that payment goes to a new CDD payment. So I, hopefully this clarifies and that's what the intended changes. Now, some people have brought up, and let's talk about it quick, operations and maintenance. What's going to happen? Operation maintenance, you know, that's going to, who's going to control it? How's it? Well, you're going to have a resident control board, what the plan would be. And I know these individuals and they are very budget-conscious and minded and they will manage the budgets as they are right now. And how do you, how do you know all these budgets? Who works? We have a property management company that's been managing these facilities, Evergreen Lifestyle Management. They understand every intricacies of the facility. They understand the changes in when it has to be painted, when the replacement hurt. We did a detailed evaluation back in 2011 of every building and went back in. Evergreen jumped into it and Craig will elaborate on it and has focused in on getting all the major improvements that were necessary in that plan at that time done. We replaced recently the dehumidification system in Riviera. That was a big, big job, but that was in the earmark to do. They redid the roofs over at the Riviera. They've been redoing the air conditioning system, so little by little, check, 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 check. These people have managed it and again, through this Evergreen Connect it's called. And you're going to hear more about it and the CDD board hopefully will be able to hear about it as well, how they manage their facilities and what they do. Because I have a lot of faith in that individual over there and Craig has done a tremendous job in managing the process and what was necessary. So the management of the O and M is very important, but keep in mind also, if this thing does, moves forward, what happens is, our company, AV Homes, still has 1,500 homes or so to build out. We would be paying that O and M fee as well as everybody else would as an individual homeowner. So for X amount of years, we're going to be paying into those coffers of an O and M in addition to the debt service that would be paid on those. So there's no free lunch here. We would still be paying as we exit the community and get ready to jump across the street. Again, everybody's trying to understand, well, what's the valuation? We haven't got there yet. There will be appraisers that will be set up to evaluate the cost of the facilities. And they'll look at two things. They'll look at the income approach for the facility of what the membership fees are and they'll look at the replacement costs for the facilities as well. There are experts that do this in the field, that do this all the time and they will continue to do this to evaluate the cost of the facilities. But the goal is what? The goal is to not increase, so if the value comes in, and I'm going to throw it, $300 million, some crazy, and you guys can't afford that. We're going to reduce whatever the amount is to meet the current membership rate. That's the goal. That is the goal. And at the same time, provide, come back in and provide $12 million of replacement. Again, and we met with some of the committees and it was like, well, how could you do all this? How are you doing this? But it's all possible through these tax-exempt bonds that are run through the community development district. So we'll get into detail and again, I'm going to be here for questions because again, it's a lot to comprehend today. And then again, this is just an explanation again on how it would be, how the purchase price would work. Now, access management, this has been a very, very, we spent, everybody's going like, "After our first meeting, what happened?" Now access management, this has been a very, very, we, we spent, everybody's going like, after our first meeting, what happened? Where'd, where'd you guys go? Well, we've done our homework and we've, we've researched and we've worked with, with counsel from the Community Development District. We've worked with our outside counsel. We've had, uh, MBS go back in and research all of the existing recreational CDD facilities in the state. And there are over 80,000 members, uh, of these recreational facilities. And, and we would set up what's called a user access pass. So if someone came in and they wanted to be a member of the, of this, uh, this facility and they wanted, uh, an annual membership. Uh, they are gonna be paying, and I think you've heard this from the, the committee chair, uh, from LITA, but they're clearly gonna be paying an exorbitant dollar amount. Okay, and what do I mean by that? They're gonna be paying at least what you're paying, paying, plus they're gonna be paying for the guard services. They're gonna be paying for the private roads. And I don't know if everybody knows this, but the roads in here are private. Okay, so they, they are not, they're much different than any other place you've heard about. The villages or any other place you've heard these terms. They are public roads. These are not public roads. These are private roads. Okay, so there, there's a, there's a substantial difference in that and we can control them. But you would set up a user pass and what kind of fees? Now that would have to be determined by the CDD board. Um, but you know, but you're probably looking at four to $5,000. You know, if you've got a lot of people out there in this neighborhood wants to pay $5,000 for membership, when they can go to the APV and pay $240 a year, well, I mean, that's their call, you know? But, but that's the kind of thing that we're, we're looking at. So from an understanding of actual people that are using this, we searched 80,000 members. We found about 80-some memberships outside of the CDD that were actually members. And of those, some of them were paying like $150 a year for a tennis membership and some were associated with a swim club. So that's the research the MBS does, had done. And, and we'll go through in detail. And we've got every one of those communities outlined. I think it's, it's broadcast on Solavita Strong, so you could see where those communities are and the research that, that's been done. But, but I think we, we could all sit here and say, you're gonna have this, this access pass that's gonna be required. You're gonna have to pay this large amount. You're gonna have to come to the gate. You're gonna have to show your information or your pass that comes in. So that's gonna be very key and important. In addition, uh, I was pointing to Craig again, but he's, he's walking around. But we also are going to be implementing, we're setting this up with the first gate on Cypress Parkway, the new gate that's gonna be set up, license plate technology. Now someone asked, "Well, license plate?" Well, we don't have any license plate in the front. No, it takes a license plate on the back as well. So there'll be a combination of license plate, technology, everybody comes in. So if someone has a, uh, user, uh, one of these transponders, now first of all, they will got, get a transponder. So they, they'll get a pass, but not a transponder, which is important. So they're not gonna push any button, magic button, let me in. They will go up to the front, show your pass. Okay, it's current, it's active. You come and you paid your five grand. God bless you, go. So that, that's, that's the plan. And this license plate technology, Mr. Carmichael will talk to you about that of what we're implementing. But that will be set up in all the gates. The first gate we're trying to set it up for is a new one on Cypress Parkway, which I think everybody's excited about as well. And I'll go into detail about that and the Parkway or any other questions you have today as well. But that, that new, new, uh, access, uh, will be set up. That will be a man gate as well, I think during limited hours. But we're gonna primary, primary use that access as a, uh, construction access. Cause we're, there's been re- so many requests from people to get off Torino Lane and these other roadways that come to the Village. And that's gonna be huge. Someone else uses that term too. So, so, uh, here, here's the details of, uh, that, that's, that's available on the charts. I want everybody to take a look at that. Uh, I know you could read all that really well, uh, but, uh, the, the thing, I know Matt loves to do this when he's with the committees, but he mentioned. Look on the right-hand side, you see the resident, non-resident members, 0000000000000. And then you come down to one that says, you know, 14 or 15, and those are the, the tennis clubs. They're paying like 150 bucks a year or the swim club, uh, which is all not active adult, but, but primary. And they're encouraging people to come from the outside. So much, much different. So, uh, again, historically, I think I've reiterated this, that is there, will, do we anticipate much demand for this? No. I mean, you, you want to pay five grand? God bless you. It's gonna help your O and M costs, believe me. So, uh, somebody wants to pay, pay for those fees, uh. So again, the man gates, everything we've talked about, uh, there, there'll be no clickers and everything I just mentioned to you, um, uh. And, and again, we've believed that there will be an improvement in the security through this, this, uh, license plate technology as well as the guard service that are happening. And, um, and again, who manages the guard gates and, and that's all through the HOA. That's all part of, uh, the management through, uh, ABM and, and also we work with Evergreen Lifestyle on the coordination of all those. Uh, so in summary, um, we're looking at $12 million in capital improvements, no incremental charges to residents for construction. And annual, annual membership due increases eliminated, which means that annual dollar that you would pay for a year gets locked in. And, uh, so now, now I, I, I'm gonna hit some of the highlights of some of the Q and As. There were some questions. I could probably answer those ahead of time. Like why is the grill being excluded, you know, from the facilities at this point? Well, we, we've met with some golf operators, uh, and, and in particular, the one that manages it right now is Integrity. And talked about the future, you know, years from, years from now of how the golf course transitions over and what happens. And, and most of the golf courses in, would, would not even look at purchasing a golf course anytime in the future if it's not tied in with a restaurant. They need a grill. And what I think our goal would be to take that restaurant and turn it into a grill. What's a grill? Hamburgers, hot dogs, uh, chicken sandwiches, yada, yada, not a full service. And then Mosaic becomes the restaurant, you know, that, 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 that's, that's what the goal would be. And I think what we've heard from the residents, that would be, would be huge. Another point in, in these acquisitions, the administration building is being excluded. And we'll explain that and what's gonna happen to it and so forth. Well, let's hit upon that a little bit. I'm excited to say that we have been working on, and you've heard rumors of this, and Tony always tries to squinch rumors. Well, on the ground floor, we've been working on that space and taking that space and converting it to a pharmacy. And that pharmacy would have sundries in it, so you would be able to get milk, uh, cheese, coffee and so forth, uh, on that, on that ground floor. And then we would, we would have on the second floor, uh, and there's also a bank in there right now, Wells Fargo Bank that's located in there. And then our sales operation and then also, um, Evergreen Lifestyle Management, the HOA facilities, uh, and club facilities are, you know, would, would be managed up on the upper floors. But one of the things that there's a requirement, it, to, if, if you were to go back in and use any type of public funds, which is what a CDD is. These are, it's a quasi-governmental agency that uses public funds. But to use public funds for private uses, there's a 5% limit. And it gets you over that 5% limit of usage. So, so that is very, very important. Now from a transition standpoint of what we would do with the building at a later, later point. I believe, I, I believe, I, again, I can't speak for our, our, our board, but I think our intent would be to work with the CDD. And then work some kind of deal where we would just turn the facility over at X amount of point in the future. Okay, so that, that, that's what our goal would be. But the reason we can't do it right now is because of the usage of the funds. That's, that's in all seriousness, and we have the users in there. And then you'd have to negotiate all those different leases that it would be done, the four different leases and try and work those out. And so I think I answered what's gonna happen to the administration building. Um, I don't want my dues to increase. We don't want them to increase either. So we, we would focus in on that membership dues that stay the same. As far as the operation and maintenance, we believe strongly that we could, through the CDD board, the resident control board. That it will be managed very efficiently and you will have a voice in that because they are elected individuals that, that are on that board. What is the timing of the improvements? No green bananas, right? So this is something that would have to be built. All these facilities would be, have to be built in three years. That would be the goal. They'd all have to be built. We would time them where, we're not closing all the restaurants down at once. No, there's no place to eat. So we would sequential, we'd make sure that when, when it's the busiest time of the year, let's say during the, the winter months. We, we, those are the times to jump in and, and work on maybe the, the Performing Arts Theater. Uh, that would kind of be the, really the first focus over there and start working on it. And maybe we could touch on, on the bistro, one of the smaller facilities. But then concentrate on the restaurant operations in the slower months. So I've already worked out kind of a timeline of that, of the three-year operation to make this happen. Can we make it happen in three years? I've only done this for 30-some years. We can make it happen. And we've already worked with our architects to understand what our needs are. We know these facilities inside and out and we can make it, we could make it happen. So you could get in, enjoy it and live it and, and, and breathe it and get to see all these great things happening in, in the community. What about Solavita Grand? And, and again, that is far out in the future. You're probably looking at, at least four to five years down in the future before something would happen with Solavita Grand. What's the relationship between the facilities here and across the street? Two separate entities? Will there be any opportunity for anybody over there to come over here? That would, would have to be worked out with the CDD board. If, if the first hundred homes could come over here and use them until the other facilities are built and you could use theirs until they're built. I mean, these are the things that are in the future that will be discussed with the CDD board, uh, and, and so forth. And I'll explain what Solavita Grand is, if anybody doesn't know what that is. But those are, those are options that are available. And with that, I think that's, that's it. Um, so now, well, I'd like to open it up for, uh, for a Q and A. And I, we, I'll hand the microphone over and then, uh, or is there another microphone we have? Okay, there's mics on both sides, so.
Can we get it live? There we go. Uh, what we're gonna do is we're gonna ask a question on the left of Tony and then on the right. And we have a couple of microphones, so if you can raise your hand, we're gonna try to get the microphone to you.
The CDD that you're referring to, is that the existing CDD or a new one?
That, that is the existing CDD.
And what are you doing about parking since these facilities are taking up existing space?
Okay, the, the ballroom is gonna be located in the open, the open grassed area, okay? But we have, our concept plan shows additional parking over near the, uh, bistro. Uh, we're, we're gonna be adding this year, I think it's gonna be done within the next two months, Craig, on the, um, Palms. We're adding another 50 to 60, we already had the, we just got the engineering plans to go ahead and, and put added parking in, in there as well at the Palms. Uh, and we'll, you know, we'll continue to look at that, uh, you know, for needs and, and demand, so.
Last question. How long do you anticipate there'll be no increase in fees or dues? People that work here are entitled to increases in salary and facilities, as you indicated, need to be repaired, painted and replaced. So how long can you, uh, guarantee there'll be no increase, not guarantee, but indicate there'll be no increase in fees?
Okay, um, good, good question. The first one is as far as the membership fee that you currently pay, there would be no increases in that. And I've explained that. That would, that would stay locked in. When you talk about the op, and, and that would be for the 30 years. Okay, as far as the operation and maintenance, that's something that would, we would work or, and the, the CDD resident board would work on the operation and maintenance budgets. Very closely with the current property management company, Evergreen Lifestyle Management, to, to manage that process. And, and are they familiar with it? Have they managed in the past? This is not, there's a big difference when a brand-new, i- if this was all brand-new and everything was just turned over. You don't have an idea of what your operations are gonna be for those facilities. But the fact that there's a 15-year history that has gone on with the facility and they understand the dynamics of what, when the filter gets changed, how often it gets changed. All those have been built into the budgets that have been established by Craig Carmichael and Evergreen Lifestyle Management. And he'll get into detail that with the board. But the goal is to keep your, keep the facilities, uh, at, at the level you want them to. Now if you want to come in and, and, and all the residents tell the resident board, "I want flowers everywhere along, every quarter for, you know, well, in the, in the club facilities. And, and I want, uh, extravagant things," that would go through the board. I mean, they, that's their choice. That would be their choice to make. But I think the goal would be for them to manage the budgets, uh, through the property management company as it's currently being done. Dig into the detail and every one of those individuals are very astute business people and, and would manage the process.
Tony, Tony, over here on the other side, turn to the right.
Oh, hey. How you doing?
You, you keep mentioning that the, uh, fees will not be increased. The club fee, the membership fee will be locked in for 30 years. Currently, we pay a membership fee, your Solavita Club dues somewhere between, depending on where you live, between 150, $190 a year. Part of that, or a good portion of it, pays the operating expenses. What number are you using when you say the membership fees? Are you using the total that we pay? Or are you just using the total that we pay for membership fees today?
Okay, good, good question. Two components to the club fees. One is operation and maintenance, one is a membership fee. What I'm talking about getting locked in is the membership fee. So I, I believe out of that number, and I'm just gonna use a round number, the O and M is let's say 63 bucks. Everybody pays that and everyone has a different membership fee. Well, how can they have different membership fees and everybody pay? We would lock that in and that's some, something that, uh, the underwriters would work on to manage in the process. So if you're paying 100 bucks and that your neighbor was paying 85 because of the time of when you came in and when you bought into whatever neighborhood. You would, you would get locked into that rate. And that's how she's worked it out. So, so it would, would be compensated for and everybody would still pay the same number. That was one of our goals is, is I'm not gonna sit in front of you and say, "Oh, you gotta pay that much more to get all these things." And that's why I'm so excited about this because I, it's, it's, uh, you know, so we, we have one person in the committee says, "I just don't understand. How can we get all this stuff and not pay anymore?" But it's, it, it's, it is, it is a great vehicle. Many communities have done those in the past. And, and again, we're, uh, you know, relying on your confidence for helping this move, move this forward. So. Uh, wait, my, my microphone, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a question.
I'll get you the mic next hit. Yes, sir.
I have a question about, uh, this performing arts building. Are you gonna make it that the ballroom can sit down for like, uh, a big dinner, like, uh, you have these Christmas dinners? You have the veterans club that have this thing, you only put 256, the pickleball's the same. Is that gonna be large enough that you could put more tables in there to have, uh, more people sit there, like maybe 400 or something around a table?
Uh, in the ball, in the ballroom yourself?
In the ballroom, that's.
Yeah. We, we had some concepts to look at the ballroom, um, and, and again, because we were doing the performing arts theater. Uh, we, we looked at a couple of options and this still is to be worked out, okay, with the performing arts theater. There's two options when you do a performing arts facility. You could do what's called, this, where the seating gets, uh, it's almost transparent where you, you could move it and it, and it's like a flat floor. And then you move the seats and it's expandable. Um, and then you could, you could have functions in there. So it's kind of a multipurpose. So that's something, that's a detail that we could work out with, uh, we really need to sit down and zero in with the performing arts group and, and, and get those details. But our belief and everything, all of our research is, this is what the request is, to have that stadium seating, to have fixed seating, a real theater. Now, so the ballroom, we'd have to go back and look at the ballroom, what could be done to expand, to get some additional seats, which we have. But, you know, there's some work that's needed to go in the hallways and kind of renovate those so they become open, they become space in the ballroom versus out in the reception area.
Well, could you make like the stage if you're gonna keep the ball, the ballroom? Could you put the stage back? Just have a small stage?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Absolutely.
You gotta get at least 400 to 500 that can get in there.
Absolutely. That, because we had.
Once you leave, it's all done.
Because the, that's, uh, our goal was to try and create this more of a theater stage. But now we can go back to just having it maybe just for functions and you would open up the space for additional seating. And that's something we'll work with Sherry on, uh, and I think you're familiar with the facility, Sherry, right? No. Another 13-year veteran or more, what, 15-year, God bless her, so. Yes, sir.
Tony, okay, let's talk a couple of years out. Solavita Grand, finish expansion here. What are you gonna do with Cypress? I realize you just inputted. What are you gonna do with Johnson Island? 10 people have been killed on that road. You're now gonna add about.
Going towards Haynes City?
Going back and forth, yes. I mean, that's a racetrack.
Yeah, it, it's, um, well, there's a couple of things that are gonna happen. Because, because of the Parkway now, the expressway authority is looking at, um, Cypress Parkway. Uh, so they're, they're definitely looking at improvements on that and that's gonna be on their nickel to do those improvements.
Right.
Okay, coming across. Uh, we do believe that the traffic studies have said that there are gonna be a, a huge component of numbers. Like if there's 50,000 cars, let's say on Cypress Parkway, that you're gonna get 10% or 20% or 15%. you're gonna get ten percent, or twenty percent, or fifteen percent going on the new Parkway. And again, you'll have two options in the Parkway. You could either enter it from Cypress Parkway, or you can enter it from Marigold. But that's gonna relieve some of the traffic on Johnson Highway. Now, going to the west, there is another, you know, there's, there's more development and stuff happening out there, but that's all, I'm not privy to those, that's all part of Polk County. We pretty stay, we stay pretty close to, to understanding what's going on, if it's gonna affect us. But so far, any improvements on the Parkway is gonna really be through the Expressway Authority, which we've already started dialogue on that with them.
Okay, one other question. And that concerns the golf course. When we first moved here, there was a proposal, there was gonna be a third golf course built across the street. Two holes would be on this side, sixteen holes on the other side.
I did that one, yeah.
Is that proposal still on the books?
No, no, it's, it's not. The interconnect of the golf courses, originally, we were gonna have fifty-four holes working out of the pro shop over here, and we had four holes on this side, because I'm the one that did that one with the, the, the Oaks course, or Cypress course, with the Cypress course. We took the old Pointy Inn Golf and Racquet Club, the Devon Von Hagee Course over there, put fourteen holes over there, put four over here, so we could have a thirty-six-hole golf course. So that, that was kind of my idea. But, but going across the street, we had the same idea with an overpass and so forth. That's off the table now because of what's happening with the Parkway and so forth. So the plan would be to do something across the street, another course, plan-wise, and one of our, one of our visions there is probably do at least a nine-hole executive. I think there's been a big request from the community to do that. Members from over here would be able to go, whatever golf course company we would have to manage that. But again, that's, you're looking at four or five years out before that would happen. But there's a need for that, that nine-hole walking course. People have asked for that, to walk that course, and, and much more enjoyable, and I, I would probably play much better on that course, as long as there's not water, you know.
Okay, I promise. Last and final question, and that's to the management. Why do me, as a resident of Solavita, have to pay the price at fifty-nine dollars when, and when a guy comes off the street, he pays the same fifty-nine dollars?
For a function?
For, no, to play a round of golf.
Oh, for a round of golf.
Sunday was fifty-nine dollars, if you could get a tee top. I go to Kissimmee Golf Course, I pay thirty-seven dollars. True, it is not as fine a course, but it's not a bad course. As a resident, shouldn't we get a, a small break? I realize the men's club, residents, outsiders, most courses are priced that way.
Well, well, again, this is, yeah, again, this is a little bit different on the golf course, but let me, let me just share, we manage the golf courses very closely, and we do listen to concerns, especially when they start falling off from an appearance standpoint and play standpoint. So, you know, there is, the current management company is not Craig's company, but it's called, it's called Integrity Golf, which used to be called Celebration Golf. And, and we are digging into all those details, because one thing that would happen from a management standpoint with that is, is as we transition over, there could be a change in who runs the golf course. Again, that's, they'll be open for, for new proposals. That's one of the things that we could put on the table at that time and say, "Listen, we want a better rate for the members that live here." So that could be built in. Yes, sir.
Tony, I can give you some information on the Cypress Parkway. I brought this up before the county commission two weeks ago. The land is being bought, most of it is being bought to be able to go from Johnson Avenue and one ninety-two, rather seventeen ninety-two, all the way up to the entrance of Solavita, just where your, our road is. And this will take a little time, and it is in the works, it's been in the works for over a year. We are finally getting down to it, and I hope that we get to it sooner, because of the talk that I'm gonna give tomorrow morning may change things with the addition to Solavita Grande. We have to have this done early and now. That's one. Number two, what provision have we done to make for storage for some of the groups that have to store merchandise or equipment in Solavita, like the Surt organization? We have our generators there, we have the facilities where we give out different stuff if people need wheelchairs, crutches, any form like that. Where would we be putting this stuff? Because with a storm, we were told by the county, we will not be able to get access, they will not be able to get access in here fast enough. So we have to do it ourselves. And Surt is growing. I hope anybody who's new here, come down, I inviting you. So maybe you and I will sit down and talk about that.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I recognize the storage issue, and a couple of things in the performing arts theater, we have implemented some extra storage in there to be designed into that facility, number one. And we're also looking at when the expansions of mosaics would happen, additional storage there. It's been always an ongoing issue with storage, so we work very closely with Craig, and we're so fortunate to be able to understand the facilities as well as we do, but those are, I commend you for all your efforts with, with Surt, and we'll, we'll look for, make sure we have proper storage, especially if the bar is holding some of that equipment right now at the tower bar, you know. Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for coming and explaining this. All of these enhancements are contingent upon selling the amenities to the CDD and having the CDD float another twelve million dollars on the bonds to fund them? That's a question.
Yeah. I, well, there, it actually, the, the way it would be, it's not, it's not floating twelve million dollars to do the improvements, it's, with the sale of the assets for X amount of dollars, we are then going to be taking the proceeds of that and putting twelve million dollars back into the facility.
Which would mean the sale of the amenities would have to be increased by twelve million dollars?
No, if the facilities is worth X amount of dollars, you take X amount of dollars, and then you take off that twelve million dollars to do the facilities.
I'm glad you said that.
Yeah.
And second question is, what happens, what's AV's intent on selling this to a outside concern?
Well, interesting you ask that, because, you know, one of the things that, and this is, in, we're currently not talking to anybody about selling the facilities, but there has been discussion from outside parties, and there was interest. And I backed everybody off, and I said, "Wait a minute, you know, the residents, I mean, I'm very close to this community, and our desire is to put the control of this facility and this community in the residents' hands, rather than have an outside." I know I spoke with one of the supervisors at one point, he was involved with an outside sale that took place, and that was down in South Florida, and it didn't go very well. I mean, you kind of lose control, and I think we point this out in Solavita Strong, that that's not our preference to do that. We would prefer not to do that. And again, I'm pointing everybody in the direction, we've got to, this is, this is a win-win for everybody. And it truly is. And I could, and I could look anybody in the eye and say that, you know, versus selling it to an outside party for, you know, something that they're gonna, they're gonna get income from, and not put anything back into it. And I've sold our board, you know, and I've said to our CEO, and that we don't just wanna walk away, we wanna put more into this. This is one of the top communities in the country. I'm proud of it, and I think everybody in this community should be as well. I mean...
Oh, yeah, we are.
Yeah. And, and we're, we're gonna, you know, I think we're in the top five last year. I wanna be number one. I don't wanna be five, I wanna be one. And what do we have to do? We need, we're, we're going Solavita Strong, you know, and we're gonna pump iron, and we're gonna, we're gonna get to that next level. And, and everybody's gonna work, you know, work towards that, you know, 'cause we do not want, and people say, "Oh, you're just gonna leave us abandoned." We have a long history here, you know, this, we've been involved, meaning the developer goes back to GAC, goes back to Avatar, and, and again, everybody understands, who is AV Homes? AV Homes is Avatar Properties. It's just a DBA, Doing Business As, okay? So, again, you know, we have a long history here, the company's been, been doing, been involved with this, this area since the sixties, okay? So a number of years, and then we have, we have property across the street. We wanna do this right, and we're asking everybody to work together. We wanna do it right, so everybody's happy, and we exit, and exit, and everybody's, you leave happy customers, and you go across the street and build more happy customers. I mean, that's our goal.
I think your explanation of this hopefully puts to rest so much speculation that's going on.
Oh, very good, thank you.
And has some residents pretty fearful.
Thank you. And again, I'll be here all day long, we got an afternoon session as well, but with this Q and A that we're trying to do, we've tried, Matt has been very instrumental with this strong communication plan that we've had, and Kelly, I'm sorry I didn't introduce her as well, but Kelly Finley is here as well, she's our VP of Marketing right here as well, and she did such a tremendous job putting this information out, because I goofed in the beginning, I didn't, we didn't get the information out ahead of time. And I apologize to the CDD board for the abuse that...
Personally, it's good to hear what you have to say.
Thank you.
Tony, thank you for your presentation today.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you.
It's been very helpful.
Thank you.
Just a question, Solavita Grande, I don't know what the target audience is for that community.
Active adult.
So, and what is the plan, a little bit more detail on the plan for sharing of the amenities and the facilities?
Well, we haven't got that, that far. I, I think it would be very positive if, you know, as we sell the first couple of homes, while we're building a new facility over there, that maybe the first hundred residents could use the facility over here. I know Del Webb does that sometimes, but we'd have to negotiate that with the CDD board, that'd be their decision. Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yes. You're, yes, 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 yes. And I could show you all the plan, we have the, you know, some of the original designs. We've got the first eight hundred homes approved over there from a construction standpoint, and it's, but, and the design, you know, and type of homes would be very similar, I mean, you'd wanna go back to history of what, what is selling successfully here and work on that, so.
Okay, finally. My question is, the CCD...
Apologize.
The CCD...
CDD, yeah.
C, CDD, okay. Requires, to purchase the facilities, they would have to sell bonds, correct?
Correct.
Okay. At some point in time, the bondholders, whoever buys them, will wanna be paid. So the CCD gets their money from the taxpayers. So necessarily, wouldn't our taxes have to increase to pay the bonds?
Well, you're, you're gonna take the, the cost of the membership, and it's now gonna be a non-ad valorem tax item on your taxes, just like you see in your CDD right now. So that number now, instead of paying us, or paying Craig's, you know, company to collect that, you would see it at the end of the year on your taxes. And then, and then when you pay your taxes, now, some people, I'm not gonna say everybody does that, but some people write off these non-ad valorem tax items, and you gotta talk to your tax attorney on that, but I think ninety-nine percent of the people, I'm twitching when I say that, do that, so, but it's an item that people that live in Celebration or anywhere else, you know, it's something, it's a practice, it's common spread. But it becomes on the taxes, yes. So the number, instead of paying us, like that, that picture showed, you were paid on your taxes. On, it's a non-ad valorem item.
But it most likely, it most likely will increase.
No, no, that, that number would stay the same.
Where would, where do they get the money to pay off the bondholders then? It has to come through taxes, the only way they get the money would be property taxes.
Well, you're taking the membership fee that would be paid, right? And that membership fee now translates to a thirty-year taxable item that's fixed, that pays the debt service to the bondholders. So they take the number, instead of paying us, right, this fee, this membership fee, there's two fees that you'd pay. You pay a membership, and you pay an operation and maintenance. The membership fee goes up a dollar every year, you know, per month, every year, and what we're saying is that fee now becomes locked. That stays, whatever you're paying right now stays the same. Just take that and from this pocket, instead of putting it in this pocket, put it in another pocket, that you would pay it out of this pocket. But it's the same dollar, it's the same, the dollar goes from here to here.
I understand the membership fee, I'm talking about the operation fee.
Okay, the operation fee also would go on the taxes, 'cause that's, just like your stormwater, right now, the CDD manages the stormwater ponds. There's two fees with that. There's the debt service for the bond that pays the bondholders, and then there's a fee that's the operation and maintenance, which is, I think, ten or twelve bucks or something like that. So those, those numbers, again, one pays the bondholder, the other one pays the operation and maintenance.
Okay, what I mean is, then we are going to be paying the bond fees.
Yes.
Yeah.
Instead of the membership fee.
So we will be paying more money in the total.
Well, instead of paying us, you're paying the same to somebody else. You're paying somebody else, it's...
That's not what I'm asking.
Yeah.
If they're gonna, if they're gonna float millions and millions of dollars with the bonds to purchase this, where are they gonna get the money to pay the bondholders?
Through the bond proceeds, yes. Yeah. Yeah, eventually it's gonna go away, right. That's how the bonds are paid, through that, through that number, so. Wait, wait, another, Mike over here, I'm sorry. Another Gator, or what is that? You only give it to Gators, Sherry?
Okay, I got two things for you. One thing, what's gonna happen to the Riviera if you're building that new wellness?
Yes.
What happens to that?
The Riviera would...
Because that is kind of like a wellness center right now, so what do you...
Well, it's just that you, you would have more health and wellness, I mean, just more facility, and if, and if you look at the location that's depicted on a plan, it's kind of halfway between here and Portofino, 'cause, you know, it answers a lot of questions about, hey, I can't get any more pickleball courts, and the Smashers want more...
You say Evergreen and everything else is doing a wonderful job of keeping, keeping up the facilities, but I, I don't see that. When you have bathrooms that you can't use, and the toilets are out of operation for months, and you, now you look at your grill, and you can't even replace the cooler, how are they keeping things up?
Well, I, I wasn't aware of the bathroom facilities, but, you know, our club manager is Sherry, okay, and I think she'll, she could maybe address, I wasn't aware of any bathroom issues that are out there, but they should, here's one, you know, one thing, we're very close to the facilities. If you see something like that, our emails are available and... Sherry?
Okay, I'm not sure if he's talking about the grill that this was happening in, if it's the grill that's happening in, that's integrity.
He's talking about bathrooms somewhere, restroom somewhere.
No, he's talking about the grill.
Oh, the grill. Well, the grill is gonna be remodeled, so. I wasn't aware of that. Again, that's the first I've heard of that.
That's something that we need to take to integrity, because those are, those, and if they need some help making sure these things are fixed, we'll be glad to step in and make that happen.
We'll get that addressed. Yes? Yes, sir.
You said that you analyzed other CDDs or other communities that went through this process. How does it affect home values? Is there, do you have an estimate?
I, I don't have an answer. I know some of the CDDs are set up in the beginning, actually, like recreational CDDs, and, you know, some transition, but I can't speak for the, for the values, you know, Rhonda, any, any idea on those? No, we didn't research the values on those at all, so. Right. Yeah. Yeah, we, we wanna enhance the experience here.
Hi, Tony?
Yes.
I gave you sort of a preempt of what I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, if you could just hold the mic up, I'm sorry.
Okay. And this is also to address your questions to the co-Vice President or Co-President. What I am concerned is, and I appreciate you doing all these amenity changes and improvements, and I appreciate that for being a longtime resident. Number one, is anything gonna be done to improve the ballroom?
Yeah, what, what we would do, the, the plan was to take a look at the, what, some of the things that we've done on the stage, and if, if we don't need those modifications, we can modify that, so instead of having that as the, now the performing arts theater... So, instead of having that as the, now the performing arts theater, we could transition it back to a ballroom. So, there's funding that we could do that for.
Okay. Now, you mentioned that you're going to fund $12 million, correct?
Yes, yes.
Now, is that an estimate, or is that a firm figure from your accountants or your number crunchers?
Well, that's the number that we put together for the estimate to do these improvements from our architect with the contingency that we have in there, and that's the number that we've committed to.
Okay. Then my question goes, taking a look at the balance sheet at A V Homes and their liquidity statement, right now, you've got to pay off $46 million in senior debenture notes this year, and approximately 170, let me even look closer, 279 million within 2020. My concern is, will you have the necessary free cash flow to do this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought I had a loud voice.
I'm glad Matt is here. See, here's the...
The, I think the beauty of the situation is that the C D D will be in control of these funds for these improvements. So, these improvements are not going to be coming out of A V Homes' pocket. That's, number one, I don't think there is any concern with A V Homes' financial position in any perspective, but did I answer that question, or no?
Yes and no. Because when I take a look at your balance sheet right now, you're 52% in that, 48% in equity. So, my concern is you have an inverse relationship. Now, before you do a C D D, my concern is MBS to answer this, is you can't float a C D D until you have the money in hand and you do the improvements, because technically, the IRS regulation says three years you have to get these things enacted. Am I correct? Wherever MBS is.
That's, if I can speak for Rhonda, that's correct.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's correct.
But the point is, you've got to have to put out some money beforehand, and it takes the C D D, and it's 12 to 16 months to get that enacted, between getting the approval of Polk County Commissioners, IRS stamp approval, and also rubber stamp from the state of Florida. So, I'm concerned about the protocol and the process of making sure we have the necessary cash flow to do what you're recommending, which are more hard.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Well, I'm glad you supported, but we have taken a look at that. We've had, our underwriters have evaluated this. I know they have done the C D Ds before with the committee. They've only been involved with the C D D since 1999, so that's not too long. But, very familiar with, and again, I think from a company's standpoint, you know, I, again, none of, the genesis of all of this, I explained it to you. None of this came about from any situation with A V Homes. It was, and I'm speaking frankly, this was a desire to build out the rest of the community, transition the community over, and if the timing worked out, it worked out. I mean, I had to sell this to our board. I mean, Matt knows. I mean, I had to go in and say, listen, guys, this is what we should do. You know, meanwhile, they're just ready to say, no, you know, we're fine, you know, with this, or sell it to an outside party at a later date. But again, I think the company is, you know, one of the third or fourth largest home builders in central Florida. We're up in North Carolina, we're out in Arizona, you know, all very positive signs and an upswing. And again, that's shown in our 10K in our last call report that was done, and, you know, Matt's...
Yeah, and just to, just to touch, I know there was some concern, and we read some articles. I mean, A V is, over the last two years, has been one of the fastest-growing homebuilding companies in the country, not just in central Florida. In central Florida, we've taken it to be the third-largest homebuilding company in the metro, and there's 25 publicly traded companies all within this market. So, A V is definitely in a growth swing. They just did a large acquisition north of $100 million in North Carolina to help expand their portfolio and diversify a little bit, which is one of the main strategies. So, the debt situation, I think you're talking about, debt is not necessarily a bad thing. I mean, if you talk about getting a 50% loan on your home, that's generally a good thing. It's a good use of low funds, so.
I agree with you. As long as you can pay the debt, you have the necessary cash flow to do what's necessary inside the company, but also, I don't want to see scaffolding here and then building stop.
Well, the money, the money for these assets is going to be controlled by the C D D. Is that fair to say, Tony?
Yeah, we would commit the dollars, we would put them aside, right? So, it'll be in an escrow fund, and then, and so they'll know it's going to get built. And...
If I could as well, one of the benefits of a C D D is a couple of things, and Rhonda spoke to this as well. A C D D is exempt from income tax, so currently, A V Homes pays real estate taxes on a lot of the facilities that will be sold. They will no longer have to pay. So, when we talk about operations and maintenance, the operations and maintenance costs will go down significantly because the C D D is exempt from taxes. So, there's a huge cost savings out of the gate by doing this to a C D D. Additionally, if you, if you're concerned about cash, the C D D is a first lien holder on any position, and those, there's no forgiveness, and there's no collection requirements because they're on the tax bill. So, if you compare that to the current collection method of HOA dues, you could default on your HOA dues, and I can only collect a certain amount. Whereas if they're collected on the tax bill, they're automatically pretty much guaranteed. It's the safest position you can have. It's premier to a mortgage. So, even, let's just say the world fell apart, worst-case scenario, the C D D is still guaranteeing, the C D D is still guaranteed those funds by whoever ends up purchasing that property. So, there's, it's basically a zero default rate on C D D mortgages from that individual.
Sales tax also.
Sales, yeah, sales tax also, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Oh, you got the mic. Hi, Tony, again.
Yes, Tony, I have two questions. Are you going to market Solavita Grand from this sales facility?
We haven't got that far, but we would like to, yes.
Okay. And the last question is, after the arts facility is built, and all these other things are built, are they also going to be owned by the C D D?
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. And the 12, everything gets included?
Yes.
Other than what fell over? Thank you.
Yeah, no, as long, yeah, as long as it's not the TV, so, yes. And again, this is the great, great session, because it's nice and cool this morning. I think this afternoon's going to be a little hotter.
Just to clarify his question on the grill.
Yes.
He said...
Hey, Tony, just to clarify his question, he said all $12 million of improvements will go with the residents. Just clarify with the improvements to the grill?
Yes, what, we're committing that, those capital dollars, but from a, from a, those, the dollars for the grill improvements basically would be coming from our pocket. So, in other words, the same thing, but we're, because that's excluded from the sale, the grill is excluded, because that's going to be part of the golf course, as I explained, we would still be doing those improvements. So, there's still going to be $12 million improvement, but instead of, let's say, the improvements to the buildings for the C D D buildings are 11.2, and I think it's $800,000 is what we have earmarked for the grill, that would be coming basically from going in a different pocket, but there's still $12 million improvements.
We pay a club dues, which is like from $150 to maybe $180, correct?
Yes.
And, you know, you are basically saying that the, only a portion of that is going to stay the same, is that correct?
Correct. There's two components. There's, one is a membership fee.
And that's the one that's going to stay the same?
Yes, and then the other one is operation and maintenance. And then we mentioned in the operation and maintenance now, because of the efficiencies of what's going to happen, there's some things that Matt just pointed out, that the facilities now are not going to be taxed, because right now, we're paying property taxes on these facilities through the O and M. That goes away, okay? So, that doesn't happen anymore. So, that's, and then on top of that, because we still have homes to sell, and there's going to be X amount of homes committed as part of that, whatever homes aren't sold, we're paying operation and maintenance on as well ourselves, even though we're not using the facilities, but we'll be paying that number to the C D D as well.
So, it's basically your projection that that component will not change either, or have you looked at?
Well, that's our goal, is to keep it the same, and I think the C D D's goal is as well. I mean, we, the resident board, we would work hard to make that happen as well.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's, again, you know, our sales manager, Bob Kanjin, pointed out that all of this is, you know, we're not, we still have 1,400 homes to sell in here. We want everybody, you know, we want positives, we want, we want, we want... Whoa, come on, Craig, hold that up, no. No, we want to be very positive as we go across the street, so you, it's a great community. You know, you don't want to abandon it. You want to, I mean, it's the beauty of it. Yes, sir?
Good morning.
Morning.
First, a lot of my questions since I've been here with my hand raised have been answered, so thank you.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
I've been off and on living in Solavita for seven years. I like the tone of this whole meeting and what is on the boards.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I see the vision, very nice.
Thank you, thank you.
Going back to the bond issue, just roughly, for example, what interest rate is that? Is it callable? What are the assumptions on the sinking fund, you know, to retire the debt in, you know, 30 years out? And the second part is, how do you, into the models, pricing models, into the, you know, the models of the balance sheet, how do you, what are your feelings on the Parkway? How that will increase the value of the whole property, the Parkway?
Well, a couple of things. I've got Rhonda here, she could answer, answer those questions from that standpoint, but Beck, I could answer the ones on the Parkway, but I believe the Parkway is going to have a very positive...
Sorry about that.
The Parkway is going to have a very positive impact on this whole region and this whole area, not only for Solavita, but everything that we have across the street. I think everybody's got a short history on that, have heard from me on the coffee talks in the past, but I was here when I told everybody we were going to open this thing up in 2008, you know, and then, and we spent $50 million at that point. Well, the world fell apart, as we all know, and we had to go back in and give all of our hard work to the county, in addition to where that farm project's at that's going on, and, you know, quite a few other things, but bottom line is, it's now happening. It's going to open up April 30th. The connection's going to be at the park, at the Marigold, and I understand Kelly's worked on doing a Solavita 5K that's going to tie in there, so hopefully, everybody here's going to walk it, or at least run it, which will be great. And the Solavita Runners Club, I understand, is 100% behind it and working with us on that. But then the second part of that is going to tie into Cypress Parkway, that will be, it says December of this year, but I've heard, because it's ahead of schedule, it's probably going to be September, probably around there, so that'll open up at that point.
Right from us.
Right from us, right at the front door. Is it going to help? Absolutely, you know. I mean, you want to go out to Tampa, you shoot straight up there, 70 miles an hour, and then you want to go out to 27, you go on 54 right there. It's another exit out. You want to go to Champions Gate, the restaurant's up there, and this is going to bring more stuff to us. I mean, you see the commercial stuff going on, I'll be able to talk about that as well a little bit later, if anybody's got questions, but, you know, the commercials happening, we've got Aldi's happening, there's another shopping center that's taking place down at the corner, so, you know, all uptick stuff, I mean, good stuff. And Rhonda, maybe you want to answer the questions on the...
Regarding the interest rates?
Yes.
We can't predict where they're, where the market's going to be four or five months from now, when we're, go through all the processes to get to the bond market, but, you know, right now, the interest rates on tax-exempt bonds are the lowest that they've ever been, okay, which means they can only go up from here.
Let me ask you something. You start seeing like a negative 3% in the U.S. 10-year, these bonds are going to be, who, who's, you know, what's the call provision on these bonds?
Well, typically, there'll be a 10-year call provision on them, so they'll be protected for the bondholders' purposes for at least 10 years.
These things are marked 100 points over the 30-year Treasury. I mean, the 30-year Treasury might go to negative 8.
Exactly. I mean, interest rates are very low right now, so this is the perfect time.
These bonds might go to 400.
No, they don't float. There'll be a fixed rate.
No, the price on these bonds, the price. If you issue these bonds at 200 points over the 30s, you put these bonds out at 4.5 or 3.5 or 6.5, and all of a sudden, the interest rate goes to negative 12, these bonds have got a 500. Who's going to take those bonds? Who's going to own those bonds?
Well, if you issue your debt when you're at the lowest interest rates you could possibly be in the market, then...
Have you seen the European interest rate? I'm sorry.
Then nobody's going to, 10 years from now, I mean, you're not going to get a lower interest rate when you want to refund.
Six months from now, ma'am. Six months from now.
I don't understand what you're saying. Are you suggesting that the rates are going to go lower?
I'm saying that 175 in the 10-years right now, they might go to negative 175. And they might go up. And they might go up.
Anything here?
Yeah, I, you know, I think, you know, part of the, part of the response was that the rates are the lowest they've been right now. We can't predict where they're going to be. If anybody can predict any of the stock market or any of the markets, please, I need help right now. I mean, we, you know, yeah, so.
I'm not saying I can predict the interest, I'm not saying I can predict the S and P, but I'm not saying I can predict the interest rate. I'm saying that says, what if the 10-year interest rate goes from 1.5 to 1.75 to negative 3, what happens to the price of these bonds that you're getting ready to issue, $12 million?
Tony, let me take this one, just to clarify. If the price, if you're, if the price of the guns, I think you're saying, if the price of the bonds go to $1 billion?
Yeah, the price of the bonds goes to the moon.
Correct. Tony clarified this earlier. The price of the bonds are going to be priced so that your dues afford those bonds. So, if the, if the bond, if an appraisal comes in and says, based on the, I think what you're saying is based on the income approach, if the bonds go to $1 billion, we're not going to go out to the market with $1 billion. Our price is going to be based on what your dues can afford. So, if the appraisal comes out and says, this, your income stream is worth a gajillion dollars, we're going to come back and say, okay, we're going to work with the C D D and say that the fair market value, and tell me to, tell me to be quiet here, Rhonda and Tony, if I'm speaking out of place. We're going to come back and say, well, your dues can only afford X, so we're going to drop that down to X. So, what interest rates do to the value of that is irrelevant.
I think I'm talking about more the collateral. The collateral is...
The collateral's not changing because your dues aren't changing, and the assets aren't changing.
The collateral is by the number of shareholders that are in here that are going to pay the bond. The interest rate, which is triple tax-free, depending how you file your income taxes, is going to remain the same, as the gentleman said behind me. So, when we pay it, whether it's a 20- or 30-year bond, is immaterial. All bonds will float in price. However, it's up to you, let's say, standing in the side, you want to buy a C D D from Solavita, then what's going to happen is, you're looking more for the income stream than the principal. You could hold the bond for 20 or 30 years, depending on the length of the bond, and then therefore, you can get your principal back. It's like a stock. You buy the stock at $10, it may go up to 12, 13, it can go down to 8. But the point that I'm saying is, if you wait, it goes back to 10, you can get a wash. Am I correct on that?
Correct. Okay, here we go.
Here, quick question.
Okay, down there, hi. I'm sorry, we've ignored this side over here, so we're coming over here. Here we go.
Totally different, real easy question for you. Regarding the memberships available to the outside of the community, what, first of all, are they going to be 55 and up people, same age requirement as us, and will they have access to all the amenities? Like, are they going to be playing pickleball with us? Will they be buying tickets to our shows and, you know, using our rooms for entertainment?
Yeah, I think it's a two-part question. The first one was on the age restriction. We anticipate, because of what's being done with, in Polk County, that there's an age-restricted We, we anticipate because of what's, what's being done with, uh, in Polk County, that there's an age-restricted community, that that would be the case. But keep in mind, remember, twenty percent of the, of the membership now can be below that number, and we're still well within that number, and I know Bob can confirm that, so, uh, but the, the reality is that, uh, to get somebody to come in in the outside, will they be able to use the facilities? Yes, if you wanna pay five thousand dollars a year, God bless you, you know, um, uh, and come in and use the facilities, but, you know, the, the, historically, the, the number is zero, 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 I mean, it, no one wants to pay those kinda dollars to, because we, they'd have to pay for our guards, our, our, our gates, everything that you enjoy right now that you're paying for, and on top of that, the club membership. But that would be determined by the CDD board of what that number's gonna be. And, and so I have, you know, I, in the research we've done, that's why we spent all these months making sure of our facts, and you said we haven't, no one heard back from us after that original presentation. But we spent time researching this, and, and out of eighty-four thousand, uh, members of these CDDs, there's like eighty, and some of those were associated with this tennis club we mentioned, and, uh, a swimming club, uh, these two developments, and, and, and that's all part of that literature package on Solavita Strong you'll see as well. Because, because again, it's, remember, we don't, you know, we don't wanna affect any of your lifestyle, we wanna make it better, you know. Anything that's gonna hurt Bob's sales standpoint and, 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 and negative is, that's not in our, our cards, I mean, we're, I wanna keep building in here, I mean, it's, I love it, you know, so...
Okay, great, thank you.
I got a question here.
I got some good news for you.
Golf course?
Over here.
I got a question on the golf course amenities.
How about some good news?
Okay, we'll go, we'll go over there next, I'm sorry.
Good news, good news.
Yes, sir.
Okay, on the, uh, dues that we pay on an, on a monthly basis. You keep saying we have two components of it. I wanna emphasize the fact that there are three components of that. Number one is the operations, number two is capital retirement, and number three is sales tax. We pay seven point seven percent, okay, of those monthly dues in sales tax. If we go to a CDD, that sales tax goes to the retirement of the debt.
It, it, it actually goes away?
It goes away, but if we pay the same amount, okay, that sales tax, that portion, that seven point seven five percent that we were paying, could be used-
For O and M.
For anything.
Absolutely. It's huge. It's, use that number. I must've been hearing that huge too much, so...
Second component, okay, the amenity center, okay, is this location locked in concrete? Can, are there other places this amenity center could go, and is there room for expansion or room for other facilities?
Couple of questions in that. Well, what, right now, we've earmarked five acres in the conceptual plans that we have, it's not, the engineering's not, you know, finished yet, but we pretty much, uh, have looked at all the surrounding areas and where this could go, and it made the most sense to go right there, because it's, it's all, it, it, it kinda marries everybody from the Solavita West side and the Solavita side, it's closer. We're, in addition, we're building this cart path connectivity. I don't know if you knew about that, but up in the very north part, there's a new cart path that we're gonna be building connection, connecting through, uh, a section that we're not even selling in yet, but to this other section that's being built, so that's gonna help people trying to access that location, so they have an option, the Solavita West people will, and Portofino people to go to this facility versus the other one. And it gives, it's open ground, so we could, we, it's kind of a fresh palette. But we've sat down with Evergreen to say, what do we need? The Smashers, we want more pickleball. Well, we got, I mean, I think we're showing eight in there right now, maybe, maybe it's, maybe, or is it six, or? May, maybe it's eight we need, so there's flexibility there in, in the courts of what's needed. Two, and we got two tennis in there, uh, the pool's a must, and then the, the fitness facility. But the goal there is not, uh, was, was to do, uh, rec fe- rec fields and, uh, health and wellness type of activities in there, uh, as well as stuff we didn't have right now, which is a basketball court and the, uh, racquetball court, so, I'll, I'll, and there's, there'll be a pavilion there too, just like we have for the tennis that's set up, so...
You're saying that the golf course and the amenities with the golf course is the grill and the golf course, uh, golf cart house?
Yes, sir.
Is that gonna be, continue to be owned by AV?
Yes, sir.
And run by Integrity?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
At some point?
Well, no, that last turn, that last com, run by Integrity, I don't know.
But some management group?
Yes, it will be a management company. It won't be, it won't be Tony Ariel, no.
Now, at some point, will you be selling that golf course?
I, it's, could be far in the future.
If you do.
I hope to be in Hawaii somewhere by then, come on, I don't know.
I understand, I wish I was there too, but are there any assurances that's gonna be built in and to, for the community that none of those, that pieces of property will be subdeveloped into homes or condos?
Right, right now, there, there's a planned unit development, it's called, when you go through the development approvals. And that area is shown as a golf course right now. If we were to go back in there and put homes where the golf course is at, God forbid, then there would be an outrage, there would be, I mean, you would go in front of the commission and say, no, 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 you know, and they would turn it into a park or something else. I mean, those things don't happen unless the public input is received in approvals. So, you have to first get a plan approved, which we did for this project back in, you know, in, in ninety-eight, and it was for six thousand units, and, and this is what we're gonna build and so forth, but you have to go through the whole process. You just can't change things like that.
No, I know, you have to go through the zoning commission, but you can get it rezoned, right?
I, I, good, good luck, good luck.
Yeah.
Good, good luck. I mean, there'll be too much opposition. The people who live on a golf course have paid those premiums over the years.
Okay.
I, I, I will be, I don't wanna be here, for God, for, you know, that's a long way, so... Yes, sir.
Tony, I think we need a little more clarification. I know you had a slide up there where it talks about, we're not gonna have an increase in dues.
Yes.
You have to kind of go into more detail. I write two payments a, a month, correct? One goes to AV Homes, I believe, and the other one goes to what we're calling dues, right? There's two payments, two checks.
Well, it, yeah, the actual, the number that goes to AV Homes, there's, there's two components to that dues right now.
Well, I know, that's what I'm-
One, it, one is the, the membership fee, and one is the operation and maintenance, and that goes to AV Homes.
Okay, and let's use an example, a hundred and sixty dollars a month. That's one payment that I make. There's another one that goes, I, I don't even know what, I think it's the HOA, um, thank you. One is HOA, and the other one, and we'll say it's a hundred and sixty.
So, so, so let's use a round number. A hundred goes to the membership fee, and sixty-three goes to the operation.
And that's what you need to put in your, in your chart, because we keep saying-
So, the hundred, the hundred is, gets locked in?
Right. The sixty's gonna be variable, so that we will-
The sixty's gonna be variable, that's gonna be controlled by the-
We're gonna see an increase, and every-
You made that statement, I didn't, so...
There might be an increase.
And we're saying because, because right now, you're not gonna be paying property taxes, which is huge. That number goes away now. The property taxes, that's part of your O and M for the facilities. So, if you own a five million dollar building and then all the facilities in it, you're paying, there's a, there's a certain percentage you're paying now in taxes on that building. That goes away. So, that could help the O and M number now, okay? In addition, you're controlling, meaning the residents are controlling the O and M of what, of what, of how that facility is managed. And how are they gonna be managed? Well, they're gonna be managed by the same company that has a history, that's been in, involved with this community. Sherry's been here fifteen years, she knows this club better than anybody, and understands the components of it. Greg Carmichael, it, it, with Evergreen Lifestyle, understands us, so that number, I mean, I, I have a very strong confidence that, you know, that, that could stay there. Plus, on top of that, you're gonna get the homes that we have not sold yet. We're gonna have to pay that O and M number, our company as well. Meaning, AV Homes is gonna be paying into your operation for the facilities as well, as a, as a non-user of the facilities, because we're part of the CDD.
All right, but I think you just need more detail on that chart, because it's, it's-
But maybe that's something we could add to the-
It might be misinterpreted that there will be no increase for thirty years.
Yes, go ahead, Craig.
Real quick, guys, the, the two payments that you're referencing, one is an HOA payment, which is-
Right, get rid of, get rid of, forget about that, that's not here.
That's HOA. The only other payment that you make is a club payment, and, and that's where Tony is saying, it's broken out, guys, by phase. If you look in your governing documents, depending on that club plan, what phase you live in is what you pay, okay? So, if you live in Rainbow Lakes, you pay that certain, for that phase, you're gonna pay that club plan for thirty years of what it was, okay? It was built out, it's one dollar each year all the way up for thirty years, okay? Now, what Tony's trying to say is that club plan goes away. It's locked, fixed in for two thousand and sixteen rate. Whatever your two thousand and sixteen rate is right now for your phase, that's what's locked in. Your O and M will always variable. It'll go up or down, or whatever it may be, depending on, and when you bring on new facilities, it may go up. But here's the thing, if, if, if the savings of the, um, um, the tax and all the other stuff that's going on, and number one, you have residents now saying, hey, as a whole, as a group, we don't want XYZ, we would like to see XYZ. You may see some savings in operating. I could tell you, whenever we transition communities over to homeowners in any which way or fashion or form, they always wanna reduce things, okay? That happens. What'll happen usually is it'll tighten up, it'll tighten up really tight, and then they'll start building from there, and that's usually what happens.
All right, so my suggestion is, do, when, in that chart, just say that the CDD will cover your dues, not your AM. Spell it out so people understand that it's not that payment that you make once a month, it's not the total one.
Correct.
I, uh, there was one question I got here just from the audience, but there was a question about, there, there was a rumor about a golf course sale. There is no rumor about any golf course sale. Tony's clinched his rumor. There is no sale. We have nobody looking at selling the golf course, we have no idea to sell the golf course right now. Um, you know, that, we, we think that the, the golf course is, needs to be at a pristine level, it needs to be a selling point for this community, selling point for the, the whole region, it's important, so, there's- And, and it could be well into Solavita Grand, or, you know, as we go, 'cause, 'cause you want it as an amenity for the region. You, you, you need a, a cultural amenity, and it's, I'm, I'm a terrible golfer, but it's in a, it is in a, Matt's a good gol- a good golfer, though.
Yeah.
Okay, next, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, how you were talking, that you could be still building about another twelve hundred houses in the community?
Yes, sir.
How about the amenities that we have, like the pool areas, and, and they have little club meetings in different areas? You see them on your map, you had them all pointed out. You're gonna be building more of them also?
The, the, the little tiny ones? No. That we're, we're built, we're building a large facility that, that you saw in, in that one picture, which is a-
So, you won't have any more localized pools?
Right, right, we'll do a five-acre, large facilities. And if you look at the location of where, of where the, where the concentration of, of additional, those homes are gonna be, 'cause that's the question. We don't want, you know, people coming down, I, people who live in these neighborhood pools right now, and they love them down there, there's no further development on those areas, so those, those are all set aside and fine, but, but the, those little pocket ones, you know, we would, it, it, it's much better from, from a, a regional standpoint to do a larger facility, health and wellness, like we're showing on the plan, it's like kinda right in the middle of where, oh, there's another home, where they, where they're gonna use the facility? Well, it'll be right there, they could use them.
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up is, like, over in Bellevana, we have the pool plus a meeting area. And that meeting area's getting used more and more and more. We're having cars parked up and down the, uh, streets. Sometimes I can't even get to, at, in or out of my driveway or get our mail. I was wondering if you put in more of these smaller places, maybe people can go other places to alleviate the pressure on one area. Because we get, they've already tried to put in a couple of car spots and stuff, but it's, you know, and you're putting in more and more houses, there're gonna be more and more of these club things going. I'm hoping with these big buildings, you'll have other rooms available.
This is gonna, this, this'll, in, in our study with Evergreen, and where our build arts are gonna be, where the demand and the needs are gonna be, and, and, and in talking with the, the, the club management, I mean, we've got our feet in the ground, we understand this, and that's where it's gonna happen, so...
Because they have to ask to use these buildings, correct? These clubs that come in?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
There's some that are all, they're just, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Tony?
Yeah, oh, I had a question. Oh, I'm sorry, we got, over here, I've been neglecting this right side, thank you.
Tony, can you explain about the CDD for those of us that have been here and have already paid down for a number of years the CDD? And now you're saying the new CDD starts for thirty years?
Very, very good. Right now, there is what's called a Community Development District, and it is set up to manage the stormwater systems in Solavita, okay? There's actually two that are set up right now. There's Solav- it's called the Point Sienna CDD and the Point Sienna West CDD. They manage the large ponds, they tear, take care of the midges, the mosquitoes, uh, the, the mowing alongside, uh, the, the weir structures that you see on top, so that's what they manage and take care of. So, their, their responsibility that you see is, is that. Now, what is a CDD, and for those that don't know, it's called, it's a quasi-governmental agency, and they have to follow the public rules. So, remember, everything that those board members do and say, they cannot talk to each other about business at any time due to the sunshine laws, 'cause they're public officials. And they're elected by the residents just during the normal election periods, um, uh, for, for certain terms, just like, uh, any, any other politician. But they're the ones that control that right now. I was on the boards for a number of years, I know the, the resident members that have, have been there. They're very professional, they have an attorney that's on the board with them, they have an engineer that's on the board with them, and it's managed just like any other government. So, again, it, it's something that, from a standpoint of, um, transparency, is open to the public. Their meetings are, have to be advertised and open to the public. Much different than, than, uh, many other administrations are handled, so, but that's what a, that's what a CDD is, and they manage currently the stormwater ponds extremely well, and they've managed those budgets for a number of years. There's also a management company that they work with called Severn Trent that manages these CDDs, and they manage the process, so they do all the invoicing, the billing, uh, the spraying that needs to be done. They respond as well, uh, there any complaints about, uh, I got midges in my backyard, and, you know, they'll, they'll come and they'll, they'll spend, they'll spend time and, and investigate it, uh, but that's what they do. And they're available as well anytime. I think you could email them and, and they'll explain further their, uh, explanation as I did.
But the timeline, as far as paying off the CDD, we have now to start when you purchase that one, and then the thirty years starting now, right?
Right, this, yeah, this, this CDD would be, there would be basically a separate number that would come out, is a separate CDD would be called recreational CDD or amenity CDD, and then if you have, let's say, fifteen years left on your CDD right now, or a certain term, that will expire. Now, in addition, there's the opportunity for Solavita West, and, and, uh, Rhonda could explain, but there's an opportunity to refinance that coming up, was it next year, right? Next year, there's an opportunity to refinance it, and what that means is lower rates, taking advantage of that. So, that was done with the Point Sienna CDD about three years ago, uh, I believe. They went back and refi- did a refi and lowered it a hundred bucks or so a month, so that's, that could happen again with this, with the Point Sienna, uh, West CDD. Who's got the mic? So, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll get you the mic. Yes.
Yeah, I don't think I heard you say, if you did, I'm sorry, but, uh, how many, or how big, or how many homes are planned in Solavita Grand?
Um, probably forty-five hundred, five thousand.
Similar to here, then, you're saying, that's the same size?
Yeah. Yeah, and I've, I gotta, I'll, I'll show you a plan someday if you want to, so... But we, we've started no activity over there, there's no, there, but we've, we do have approvals already across the street. There's a small part that's in Polk County, but the more, majority of it's in Osceola County. Oh, wait, she was asking, what, what's, can you get a, a mic over there? Uh, uh, oh, here, Craig, I'm sorry. How are you? Good, good to see you.
Yeah, I remember a couple of years ago, there was talk of both a merger of the Point Sienna CDD and the Point Sienna West CDD. Is that ever forthcoming, or has it happened, and it's just being differentiated as a, for better clarification?
Yeah, there's been this, the discussion and investigation on that, and, uh, and right now, nothing has happened on that yet, there, but the attorneys have looked at that, and I think one day, I think there's a opportunity to save dollars for both districts, uh, because there'll be consolidating efforts, and that, that's, that will happen. I, and, and whether it's gonna happen now, or, or, it would take, it's like a twelve-month process for that to happen. And for this CDD to happen, what they'll do is they'll, they'll work out some kinda inter, inter-local agreement between the two CDDs to make this CDD happen. But in the meantime, that's gonna be, that's gonna take a while, uh, for that to happen, but I understand they're looking at it from a dollar-saving standpoint for your dollars.
Yeah, I remember that was a discussion a while back, and I just wondered if that should come to be, then would there be an averaging of the interest rates on those, uh, CDDs, or the districts themselves, or no?
No, no, the one, no, they, the, yeah, they, they were, really, basically just the O and M would be affected, so, but not, not the bond debt. The bond debt would stay the same. But, uh, because the Point Sienna West one's gonna do a refi probably next year. I can't speak for the board, but I anticipate the board's gonna look at doing a refinance next year to save money, taking advantage of the interest rate, so...
And then just one more question. If the CDD, the proposed CDD transition takes place, how does it affect staffing within Solavita, if at all?
Uh, I anticipate the staffing would be consistent as it is right now, um, again, that, those are decisions by the CDD board, but you have a, currently a property management company, Evergreen Lifestyle Management, that manages those facilities. They would continue to do that, um, and, and if they, they, they fail, if Craig fails, which I don't think he is, it's not in his genes, uh, then, um-
He was on slacks today.
Then, uh, again, that would be an option, but, um, but, but I have, uh, he knows, I have the utmost confidence in what he's done, and that's why we brought him back in. I told him not to leave anymore, so, uh...
Tony, I was just, I didn't realize there were five thousand homes scheduled for Solavita Grand. Um, that's gonna put an awful lot of pressure on the two golf courses that are here. I would recommend that you consider an eighteen hole.
We would do another course over there, so...
But you said nine hole.
Well, maybe one nine, then you do another nine, I, no, I mean, I meant executive, uh, executive course. Like, an executive nine, then you do another executive nine, uh, or another, another eighteen. It hasn't been, all of that hasn't been finished, I mean, that'll be-
I think that's really worthy of looking into.
Yeah, and, and there's reasons for it, too. You're exactly right. If there, if this one has demand and play and is doing really well, you just build another one over there, yeah. Wait, uh, got a question here, thanks. Thanks, Stacy. Thank God you're in shape, you could just squeeze through those chair.
A very quick question.
Oh, could you, is it on? Yeah.
A quick, quick question about.
Just talk, right in.
Necessity to, you talk about changing the security system. I don't really understand the reason. Transponders are functioning very well.
Well, we take it, right now, we own facilities, now you would own the facilities. So we own the club, the, the amenities, the fields, meaning AV Homes, and then now you would own the residence.
Did you misinterpret my question?
Tony, he, he's trying to say as far as the transponders, they're not working correctly. It, the thing is, what transponders, the issue with those is anybody can get those. You can hand them to your neighbor, your friends, or whatever it may be. We're trying to lock it down to where it's a license plate recognition.
I do not agree with this argument, because it's in the interest of, of nobody to give the transponder, to compromise the security. This, this, I don't, I don't understand. If nobody from the outside come, why do we have, do we have to spend money to change the system of function?
No, we, we were going to do that anyway. We were going to add that license plate technology anyway. We were going to add that, that as an enhancement to our security. Because what happens is with transponders, people take those transponders and give them to their friends and so forth.
Okay, so then what's happened when you want to receive friends, or?
Oh, they have to go to the guard gate and register, so.
So, basically.
You can't hand your transponder to your friend, say, here, come on in tonight, so he has to go to the gate?
We, you, we have this system already on. When people come, we call, and.
Same, that would stay the same.
So then, what's going to be the plus of this? What's going to be the plus of this license, technology, whatever?
Well, it, it's just another enhancement to security. It's a monitor. So the, so the transponders for you would go away, and then you have the license plates. So you would register your car, your wife's car, you, you know, and you have those cars registered. So if you, if you pulled up in a rental car, right, you would, you would have to go to the gate and, and, or a new car and register.
Basically, you have to, you have more work for the same security, it's not.
But it's, it's a better, instead of you taking your transponder and giving it to your cleaning lady or somebody.
But, but, no, I, I mean, again, this is, this is not what people are doing, I'm sorry. You, you, you don't, why do you want to compromise your own security and give your, your security?
This is just enhancement, this is, that's. Yeah, I, I, I get you. Okay, thank you. Craig? Craig? Well, yeah, again, again, I'll be here the rest of the day, because we've got another one, one at 1 o'clock. I'll sit down with anybody, explain the maps to you. I thank everybody for coming today. I got a couple more questions. Thank you so much again, and I apologize for all this that happened in the beginning, so. Yeah, okay, sure. Thank you.